Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. This meeting is called to order. We kindly ask our clerk to please take the roll call.
Mike Bruno.
Here.
Chair Burkhart is out. Don Cummings.
Here.
Becky Ruby.
Here.
Dean Kilburg.
Kilburg here.
Craig Malagia.
Here.
Richard Marx.
Here.
Gene McGowan.
Here.
Chairman Deki.
Here.
Robert Swanson.
Here.
Just a reminder, ladies and gentlemen, Alderman Kilburg is joining us by phone. He is in Michigan on business tonight. Illinois statute allows an elected official to participate via teleconference for either being away on business and/or being absent for illness. So we will begin tonight like we do all nights with the Pledge of Allegiance and the glow of another state championship basketball team. I kindly ask our fire department representative, Chief Antonori, and our police representative, who provided the escorts to our lady champions, to lead us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Commander. And Chief. You guys didn't know who I was talking about, did you? Alderman Kilburg, can you hear okay, sir?
I can hear fine, there.
Excellent. If you could, yeah, we're gonna take just one minute. Alderman Kilburg, we're gonna forward you a PowerPoint presentation that Stephanie's gonna be commenting on, so you can follow along if you so choose.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. It's about 200 pages.
No thank you.
I had heard that Stephanie Hart's winning bucket made the top 10 sports channels highlights. Did anybody else hear that? Saw it on Twitter, I think, pretty cool. Am I keeping you awake over there, Sue?
Just thinking, don't look at me, I didn't watch any sports TV this weekend.
You should have it, Alderman Kilburg.
Okay, I'll, uh, it'll take a little while to get through, so.
No problem.
Go ahead, don't wait for me, I'll catch up.
Okay, thank you, sir. Our city administrator, Stephanie Dawkins, has the floor with respect to our City of Geneva fiscal year 19 budget and fiscal year 20 budget preview. Stephanie?
Good evening, good evening, council. Public, I think we have one here, and everybody else watching in the universe, as the mayor always says, for the millions of people out there watching. For those who do not know me, I am Stephanie Dawkins, I'm the city administrator, but tonight I'm actually before you as the municipal budget officer. The presentation you're about to hear is an overview of the fiscal year 19 budget, and it's, uh, we're also gonna provide a little insight on the fiscal year 20 budget. We've talked about doing a two-year budget, so we are doing a two-year budget, but tonight we're gonna focus primarily on fiscal year 19, and then as we progress, we'll talk a little bit more about 20. We're approaching this presentation as a bird's-eye view and looking at the services provided and the value received. So before I begin, I would first like to thank all of the professional staff who are seated here behind me for all of their help in bringing you a balanced budget. Most are here with us, and once we're done, if there are any questions that you may have, they're all here to address those questions. Again, though, tonight we're kind of looking at a broad overview, so if you have specific questions about the budget, we'll talk about how we would like to approach those. As we reviewed last year during the budget presentation, a budget is really just a plan. It's how you coordinate your expenditures and your revenues. According to the city's municipal code, as the municipal budget officer, I am responsible for compiling a budget which contains estimates of revenues available together with recommended expenditures for the city and all city departments, commissions, and boards. Once approved, the annual budget shall be adopted by the corporate authorities prior to the beginning of the fiscal year, and our fiscal year is May 1, for those who do not know. This evening, we will present an overview of the City of Geneva's fiscal year 19 proposed budget, along with a preview of the fiscal year 20 budget for the city's council's review and consideration. Later in the evening, we will ask the council to set a date for a public hearing, April 2nd, 2018, on the proposed budget. Prior to that date, at least 10 days before, the proposed budget will be available for public inspection, both at City Hall and on the city's website. Keep in mind, however, that budget can continue to change until the public hearing time, so we will continually update the city's website with the most current information. This proposed budget is the culmination of many meetings with myself, the finance manager, and department heads. Department heads were tasked with keeping their budgets with a 0% increase, except in those instances where there was a contract or other policy in place and excluding wages and benefits. As we go through the presentation, a couple of things to keep in mind. Tonight is a broad overview, I can't say that enough. We are about two weeks ahead of the schedule from last year, but we wanted to get out as much information to the council as early as possible. In the current draft, there are no new positions anticipated. The number of full-time employees are proposed to remain the same. However, allocations for wages may have changed. In other words, each year we evaluate how wages are distributed based upon the work that a particular employee performs. The budgets presented keep services at the current level. There are no proposed cuts in service. Lastly, we respectfully request that you wait until the end of the presentation to ask questions. So with that, we talk about the city's budget, but the city's budget is actually comprised of 37 individual budgets. So there are 37 different funds, and each fund stands on its own. So what that means is that the dollars that are attributed to that fund stay within that fund. There's no, for lack of a better phrase, no cross-contamination. So when we look at all of the city's funds, we have different types of funds. So we have the general revenue, general fund, which we'll talk about in a little bit, which is primarily where all of the city's operations come out of, where the taxes go. We have 20 special revenue funds. Special revenue funds are used to account for the proceeds of specific revenue sources that are restricted by law or administrative action for expenditures for a specified purpose. So some of those funds include our motor fuel tax, city committees and commissions, and special service areas, otherwise known as SSAs. The debt service fund, which we have one, is used to account for the accumulation of resources for and the payment of general long-term debt, principal, interest, and related costs, which are not related to a TIF, an SSA, or an enterprise fund. In short, these are our general obligation debt. Capital project funds are used to account for financial resources to be used for the acquisition or construction of major capital facilities, with some exceptions. We have six capital funds. Enterprise funds are used to account for operations that are financed and operated in a manner similar to private business. The intent is that the cost of providing these goods or services to the general public should be financed or recovered primarily through user charges. The city has five enterprise funds, the two of which most of you know are our electric utility and our water and wastewater, which, again, we'll talk more in detail about that later. Internal service funds are used to account for the financing of goods or services provided by one department or agency to other department or agencies of the city, and it's on a cost-reimbursement basis. We have two internal service funds, which are our group dental and our workers' compensation. The city is self-insured for both of these benefits, and therefore, these funds account for the collection of premiums from other funds and related expenditures. And lastly, the city has two trust and agency funds, which consist of resources received and held by the city as trustee or agent to be expended or invested according with the conditions of the trust. The trust funds for the city include the police pension and the firefighter's pension fund, which, I guess it was about two weeks ago, we gave you a presentation on kind of what happens to those funds. We'll go back one second. So just kind of general budget notes. I always like to remind things to think about as I'm giving the presentation. All of the funds presented before you have a balanced budget. What this means is that each fund has either revenues that equal or exceed expenditures. So it doesn't have to be, if you have $100 in revenue, you have $100 in expenditures, that would be balanced. Same vein, if you had $100 in revenue and you only had $90 in expenditures, that is also a balanced budget. Council priorities, as discussed during the strategic planning workshop last November, have been incorporated into the various budgets. And this presentation, once again, is just an overview. And tonight's city council packet, which is also available on the city's website, is the detailed information relating to each fund's individual budget. Although there are 37 individual funds, tonight's focus will be primarily on the big three. So I guess if you, if you want to use a Safari reference, they have the big five. If you're a TV buff, you've got the This Is Us, the new show, the big three. So we're gonna talk about our big three, which is the general fund, the electric fund, and the water and wastewater fund. So first, we look at the general fund. As I mentioned, this is where the resources traditionally associated with city operations come from. The pie chart up here kind of gives you the breakdown by percentage of where our tax dollars and where our revenues come for the general fund. So you'll notice that property tax is about 29% of the general fund, sales tax is also 29%, state income tax, which we often refer to as the local government distributive fund, is 11%, municipal tax is 8%, and then everything else makes up about 23%. It is important to note that over the past several years, many of these revenue streams have been flat or declining. For example, the state income tax is estimated to be 10% less this year. When the state finally passed their budget last year, two years late, they indicated that this 10% decrease would be temporary. However, just recently, the governor in his budget address has recommended that the 10% decrease be permanent. This equates to a decrease in revenue of approximately $195,000. Due to the decrease in anticipated revenue and increased expenses, the general fund has been balanced by the use of roughly $700,000 in fund balance, or what we call reserves. However, as we will discuss later, the fund balance at the end of fiscal year 19 is still estimated to be at or above the 25% fund balance policy level. So you've probably seen this illustration many times, but I feel like it's always a good one to share. So to better depict how your property tax dollars are divided among the various taxing bodies, we use a dollar bill. If your tax bill is a dollar, eight cents of every dollar is remitted to the city. So on a larger scale, a home with a market value of $350,000 has an annual tax liability to the city of roughly $700. It's actually $705.80, but we'll stick with 700. Last year, this same home paid approximately $830 in property tax to the city. Of course, that would be assuming no change in valuation. So if the valuation goes up, your tax might go up, but the tax rate has actually decreased. So the next few slides will describe some of the services that are provided from the general fund, which these property tax dollars directly support. And as you can see here, another little pie chart, the majority of expense for the general fund, actually over 70% of the general fund, is to fund public safety. 28% for the fire department, 43% for police department, 13% for public works, and then, unfortunately, everybody else is lumped together at 16%, which would be your economic development, your community development, administrative, legislative, all of those make up the rest of the general fund budget. So let's dive a little deeper. The top number here represents what the police department's operation budget is. So by operations, there's no capital, this is strictly what it takes to run the police department. So it's $7.2 million. If you want to turn it into terms of taxes, this is roughly equivalent to the revenue that the city collects from sales tax and income tax combined. So when, if you look back to that pie chart, we talked about sales tax being 29% of the budget, income tax about 11% of the budget. You take those two together, that about equals the same as what it takes to operate the police department. The next number, I just thought, with some interesting statistics, so you could see what kind of services are provided and what value you're getting for your money. Last year, in the calendar year 2017, they had over almost 20,000 incidents. With that, there are 49 employees, there are 36 sworn officers, which include a chief, two commanders, seven sergeants, three detectives, and 22 patrol officers and a high school liaison. And then we have 13 civilian employees, an administrative assistant, a records manager, two community service officers, and five full-time record specialists and four part-time record specialists. This is, again, just for informational purposes, but this shows kind of the types of incidents that the police department handles by percentage. So you see, traffic stops is obviously a very large percentage, but they also arrest, vehicle lockouts, hangups, driving complaints, you name it, they cover it. We tried to kind of break it out, so you could get an idea of how they spend their year. In addition to handling incidents, they also do a lot of training. I listed some of the types of training up here, you all are free to read that. Obviously, that is just a sampling of training. Some training is mandatory, some training is just good business practice. And then they do a lot of community outreach. There's festival support, crime prevention notices. If you go on vacation, they'll drive by your house, make sure everything looks in order. So there's a lot of things going on, and we talked about mental health. We now have training to have officers in training to be able to deal with some of those mental health issues. Fire department is our second-largest department, so essentially, to operate our fire department, you're looking at about $4.7 million. So again, if we take this into terms of taxes, this is equivalent to what we collect in property tax. So for that $350,000 home, who's paying $700 a year, those dollars essentially equate to what we spend to run a fire department. So again, I think that's kind of good bang for your buck, but you can be the judge. Again, statistics, for calendar year 2017, they did about 2,600 calls, and they do that with 22 full-time employees and 37 part-time employees. They're not really part-time, they're called paid-on-call, so they work various hours, they run fires, they do the same thing, they're just not full-time. We have career firefighters, we have an administrative assistant, and then we have a fire marshal. And that 37 fluctuates. Right now, 37 is the number we have. They're actually authorized to hire up to 50, but it's an extenuating hiring process to get people who may have another full-time job to be able to come on a whim and work with us as well. And there are other departments that don't allow their firefighters to serve as a paid-on-call in other departments. So similar to the police, this is just a chart kind of showing their calls for service by category. EMS rescue is the predominant call that they get, but they do have some fires. They do provide aid to other communities. The fire chief would like me to note that we actually get far more aid from other communities than we provide to other communities, so it's really a win for us. And then, false calls. False calls don't mean false alarms, per se. It means that somebody might call and say they smell something, something seems amiss, the fire department shows up, they check it out, there's nothing there, that would be listed as a false call. And some of their highlights, again, they do a lot of training as well, which is good, we want trained firefighters. They also do inspections. They inspect our local businesses to make sure that they're in compliance with fire codes. They do hydrant flow testing, public education, and again, this is just a sampling of some of the support that they provide the community. Next is the public works budget. So I have to clarify, public works in this particular number, the 2.2 million, is excluding our enterprise fund. So it's excluding any electric or water utility operations. So this is solely your street department, your fleet department, your engineering, your GIS. So last year, or actually through March of this year, they have done about 5,900 service requests, and they do that with 24 full-time employees. Your public works director, we have 15 in the streets department, three in the fleets division, five in engineering. So some of their highlights under street and fleets, on a night like tonight, there's about 200 lane miles of residential streets that they will either be plowing, or salting, or doing something with. They use about 1,400 tons of salt a year, 330 tons of asphalt patching a year, they've removed 140 trees this last year, they planted 60, they trimmed 1,200, and they did 2,825 fleet repairs. So those fleet repairs are on vehicles for all departments within the city. They don't just work on street vehicles, but they work on all of our vehicles. Engineering, GIS, they're responsible for doing the plans and the inspections for removing, repairing, and replacing 34,000 square feet of sidewalk, 74 drainage structures, three miles of roadway, and 89,000 square feet of curb. I don't know who actually goes out and measures those, but I trust that they're pretty accurate. And then lastly, all other operational departments. This is not to say that the other departments are any less important than the ones that we've highlighted, but it was just to kind of give you a comparison of dollar numbers. So with all other departments, which is legislative, which is you folks, administrative, community development, and economic development, the operating budget there is $2.6 million. I think it's nice to know that we are approaching that 10,000 number for Facebook followers, we're at 9,000-plus at last count. And there are 22 full-time employees, two part-time employees, and three interns. And so some community development highlights, there were 77 permits, 59 for new single-family, 15 for new multifamily, and three new commercial. 1,800 other permits were issued, there were 5,600 inspections completed, there were 14 plan commission cases, and 127 HPC administrative review cases. So these are cases that didn't actually go to the commission, but were able to be administratively reviewed by staff. In economic development, they've been instrumental in securing four national tenants, there have been 57 new business openings, there have been 67 special event applications processed, and currently, they are working with an industrial developer to develop 200-plus acres in our southeast area master plan. And it's important, I think, to note, too, that vacancy rates in our commercial area has gone down to 4.5% from a high of 6%. The city administrator's office has issued 413 licenses, responded to 479 FOIA requests, and then, whoops, that should be subscribers. We have about 1,800 Geneva mail, that's our weekly email that goes out, about 21 subscribers to the newsletter, and there have been 260 online and mobile requests. So those are when people have an issue or a concern, they can look on their phone, they can email it, it'll immediately come into City Hall, and we can address it to the right department. Administrative services, this is the big one. You think you use a lot of email. 20 million emails received. Of those 20 million emails, we've blocked 65,000 viruses, we've processed 29 liability property claims, which I think is actually a fairly low number, so I think that's a good number. There's 123, 252 utility accounts billed, so they understand that's in a year, so that's not a month, but that is a year, it's about, do the math, 12,000 a month, 10,000 a month. 7,500 AP invoices processed a year, and 7,000 payroll checks processed a year. So that's kind of the highlights of there. So within the general fund, as I said, all the funds stand on their own. However, there is what we call transfers, and they can be transferred as long as they're kind of supporting the general operations of the city. So in this particular budget that's before you, there's a recommended transfer to the Strategic Plan Advisory Committee of $3,500. There is a transfer of $85,000 to general capital projects, and a transfer of $40,000 to capital equipment. So the projects that are anticipated in the general capital projects are a facility assessment. This is for an assessment of all city buildings. You may have noticed that we've been having some issues, you've seen some things come through the accounts payable for heater or for air conditionings. Just last week, we had a fire in the police department from a light socket, and then two days later, I think it was, maybe less, there was the same issue in the fire department. So I guess if you're gonna have a fire, you want it in the fire department. But what we started thinking, instead of piecemealing all of these repairs, we probably would be better served to do a full and full-out assessment of all of our buildings, what maintenance issues are there, long-term, what are we looking at, so we can build a plan. The asterisks on these items indicate that they're shared with another fund. So this facility assessment, $40,000, is attributed to the general fund, and then there's money budgeted in electric and in water and wastewater to also contribute, since their buildings would be assessed as well. Public Works Team Goals, this is an annual budget item that, again, is split between general fund, electric and water, and wastewater. These are team goals that the public works department comes up to facilitate. Parking ticket software, you may recall at our strategic plan workshop, and also, I think during some of the engagement outreach with SPAC, our parking ticket software is very antiquated. It doesn't talk to other systems, it's not user-friendly. So this is proposed to get a new software, $10,000 from the general capital projects fund, the remainder would go to SSA and commuter parking, because, again, that's where our majority of the tickets are written. And then the southeast area master plan implementation, $20,000. As I mentioned, Kathleen, our economic development director, has been working with an industrial developer to get that temp area developed, and there are some things that we need to further that plan and to get that going, so that's what the budget is for there. And then under general capital equipment, we're looking at computers. These are just the computers for the general fund, so just those departments that we talked about earlier, police, fire, public works, community development, economic development. Other computers would be budgeted in the enterprise funds. And then a lift for fleet maintenance, this is a vehicle lift, really a safety issue, but again, this will be split between the three big funds. So now we move on to the electric fund. Similar idea, big number two for our next big fund. Revenues, you'll see the majority of revenues are from electric sales, the rest come from miscellaneous rental income, those types of things. But ultimately, your electric utility is set to provide electricity, so therefore, you would expect to see that electric sales are where the majority of the revenue comes from. The expenditures, broken out, purchase power, again, to provide electricity, we have to buy power, so that's 70% of the budget, and then you'll see the rest. Personal services are 8% of the budget, contractual services 5%, capital 7%, but again, just kind of gives you an idea of where the expenditures go. Their highlights, the average dollar per kilowatt hour paid by the utility has decreased by 2.4% in calendar year 2017, and every savings in that has been passed on to the customers. From 2015 to 2016, it decreased by 5.4%. We attribute these not only to improve performance at our Prairie State plant, but also in refinancing long-term debt. They've installed 988 ERT meters, so those are electronic read meters, and on average, a customer experiences a sustained outage about every three years. So that's a pretty good high reliability rate. What's that saying? Is an outage of more than 30 minutes or more, likely you will only have one every three years. And 34.6 minutes is the average length of an outage. I would note, those outages are what we can control, so if it's a distribution outage from COMEd, that doesn't go against our rating, because that's not something we have control over. The water and the wastewater fund, again, you'll see in this particular year, other financing sources is 55% of the budget. That has to do with the wastewater treatment plant upgrades that we're doing, so that's showing that loan money coming in to pay for those upgrades. Water sales, again, 26%, that's what we're here for, we're here to provide water and sewer services. Expenditures, 58% capital, that's not every year, this is particularly this year, because, again, we're doing the $12.5 million upgrade to the wastewater treatment plant. Personal services about 12%, debt service 9%. So they replaced a little over 2,000 feet of water mains in fiscal year 17. I gave you a couple comparisons here, it was about 83 million cubic feet of water consumed in fiscal year, or billed in fiscal year 17, and we're about, almost at 84 million for year-to-date. The average daily flow of treated wastewater in fiscal year 17 was 4.298 million gallons per day. Again, year-to-date, we're at 4.0 million gallons. They've completed about 1,700, 1,800 work orders, and they've installed 928 electronic read meters year-to-date. So there you have the big three. Now to talk a little bit about the miscellaneous funds, so the miscellaneous so-called, are the so-called funds that are the special revenue funds, all of the other things that we have not talked about. They're either set at the time of the property levy, which is your SSAs and your mental health board, or they're by statute, foreign fire and motor fuel. But there are a couple things we wanted you to be mindful of as you review the budget. For SSA number 32, which is on Brentwood's pond, this budget was traditionally set at $3,000. This was the amount the residents decided they would be willing to spend for some of the improvements to their area. The county adds a 1% uncollectibility factor to each levy, but this year, the collection was still under $3,000. As such, after fiscal year 19, this fund will not be able to support expenditures of $3,000. The levy will either have to change, or we have to reduce the services that we are providing to that area. So again, that's fiscal year 19, we're okay, but looking forward to 20, that's something that the council may want to discuss and determine, whether it's in increasing the SSA levy or reducing the services provided. Prairie Green, the budget shows a transfer of $1 million from the Prairie Green Fund to debt service to cover the 2012A bond payment. The $1 million is from the sale of wetland credits, and this should ring a bell to everybody, because we've actually got those credits back in December, we've already talked about this transfer happening back when we did the property levy in December. So even though the levy was all done in December, it's not actually reflected until this budget year. So when we speak of debt, the chart on the left side is a screenshot of the graph of the general obligation debt of the city from fiscal year 13 through fiscal year 2021, when the debt will be paid off. So it's right around the corner. As you can see, there's a property tax relief or a rate decrease as the debt decreases. This relief is made up of two components, the decrease in the debt service payments coupled with that transfer from Prairie Green. It is estimated that the property tax rate will decrease a little over 11% for levy year 17, which is payable in 19. So I think the graph on the left is a really feel-good one to look at, we are paying off our debt, the general obligation debt will be paid off in 2021, assuming no new debt So to summarize, department heads, the finance manager, and the city administrator have been meeting since January to develop budgets that are before you. The basic edict was that the budget request should be as close to 0% as possible. The basic edict was that the budget request should be as close to 0% as possible, taking into account contractual line items and excluding wages and benefits. All the funds are balanced, meaning anticipated revenues exceed expenditures. Just because it's in the budget doesn't mean it can or will be spent. There must be revenue to pay for an item. And of course, I always like to say, estimates are only as good as the estimator's ability to predict the future. So as we look to fiscal year 20, of which there is a draft budget included in the packet, we notice a few things that the council will need to take into consideration. And again, I'll mention earlier, fiscal year 20 is still a little in flux, we were trying to get fiscal year 19 shored up, so now we'll take the next couple of weeks to shore up fiscal year 20. But as you look at this, the current fiscal year 19 budget allocates overtime and related benefits attributable to the major special events to the tourism budget. While the tourism fund is able to support these expenses in fiscal year 19, in fiscal year 20, this fund will not be able to sustain these expenses. So we're talking about expenses either for police or fire or public works, we try to do most of the festivals on regular time, but they're either through shift changes or other things, but there is still some overtime that is incurred for the festivals. So given this information that in fiscal year 20, we may not be able to account for those, there needs to be some discussion regarding whether or not the general fund absorbs these expenses in the future, or whether there needs to be changes to the tourism fund and how the revenue, which is hotel motel tax, is distributed. General capital projects fund and general capital equipment fund, you saw that there are very few transfers there this year, fiscal year 19, to those two funds. So that brings up the non-home rule sales tax. This budget that is proposed did not include any revenue from the non-home rule sales tax. However, we did some estimates so that we could see what that might generate. So for fiscal year 19, it is estimated that if there's an additional non-home rule sales tax of a half percent, it will generate approximately 1.933 million from July to April. The tax would be, start collected in July, so we would get from that through April. That would leave 1.75 million available for capital expenditures, and that would keep the city's fund balance for the general fund at 25%, which is the city's goal. Estimated fiscal year 20, we estimate 2.265 million, that would leave a million available for capital expenditures and keeping that fund balance at 25%. I should mention that this fiscal year, the fund balance as presented is at 26.45%. So technically, that leaves us $185,000 that could still be transferred to one of these, to either the capital equipment fund or the capital projects fund. However, we did not make that transfer, because as we look forward to fiscal year 20, it would leave the fiscal year 20 fund balance at 17%. So trying to be mindful of what's happening in the future, if we spend all the money this year, it depletes resources for the following year. And again, that, those numbers are without the non-home rule sales tax. With the non-home rule sales tax, we would be able to meet some of those needs and keep the fund balance at the 25%. So having said all this, here's some ideas of where that, where those dollars would go. I sent earlier specific line items, but just as a general overview, in the general capital projects, PD projects are about, these are all in thousands, so it's not $40, $40,000 at fire department projects, 79 and a half. Welcome signs, right now, we have welcome signs budgeted in the tourism fund, in the infrastructure fund, there's still a little bit left to keep our plan going, so that would be another $30,000 here. The French Market Pavilion, we've talked about this, that project is not yet dead, about building a pavilion with the help of Bensiding, so we're still working on that, so that would be money to further that endeavor. GIS data conversion at 7.5,000. And then for capital equipment, this is really where the, where, for lack of a better phrase, get ready for it, where the rubber meets the road. So we're looking at street vehicles and equipment of 340,000, PD vehicles and equipment of 290,000, and fire department vehicles and equipment, 840, I will say that that 840 does include a fire truck, and those are about 600,000 on their own, so that's why that number seems so large. So what are the next steps? The proposed budget is a recommendation from professional staff based upon the input provided by the city council at strategic planning and in other meetings. Like other organizations, we will use the budget as a financial plan, a business strategy, and a blueprint to guide us in the coming fiscal year. However, it is only that, a plan to move us forward. It can be changed by the city council as the need arises. As a result of the public policy principles and strategies established by the city council, as well as the challenging work of our professional and dedicated staff, a balanced line budget has been presented to you for fiscal year 19. So looking forward, this evening, item 9A on the agenda would be to set a public hearing date for April 2nd. Again, once we set that date, we are then required to publish that date, we have to also have a draft budget available for public review at least 10 days prior to that public hearing, but again, you can make any changes up until the hearing date, you just, they kind of need to have a general idea of what you're talking about. I am proposing that the council, and I've already received some, so I know there are lots of questions out there, submit their questions by Wednesday of each week, I would then work with staff to draft responses to those questions, and we would include them in a document that we would post each Friday on the city's website. That way, not only the aldermen get the information, but the general public has the information, or anybody who's interested in the city's budget would know what's going on. Additional budget discussions at the March 19th city council meeting, I would propose, if there are questions regarding the enterprise funds or the miscellaneous funds, that we set time aside on that city council meeting to discuss those items, because those budgets are not affected by the referendum vote, so it would be good to kind of, if there are questions on that, get those taken out of the way. And then I would recommend on March 26th, committee of the whole, if there is further discussion wished to be had on the general fund, that we have that date, because again, we will have the outcome of the referendum. Once we have all of our discussions, we have our public hearing, we would have a public hearing and adoption of the fiscal year 19 budget by resolution on April 2nd, would be the goal. Certainly, if we're not ready at that date, that can be postponed, it just has to be passed before the end of our fiscal year, which is April 30th. And then lastly, we would adopt a resolution of intent for fiscal year 20 budget, because, again, we know things change, but at least you would have an idea of where you are moving forward. So with that, that is the bird's eye view of the fiscal year 19 budget, some insight in the 20 budget, and we are here to answer kind of general policy questions if you have them, if you have more specific questions, we can try, but the intent tonight was really kind of to give you an overview, because we realized you only got the documents on Friday, there's a lot of information to go through, but certainly, we are happy to entertain any questions you might have. So thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Alderman Kilburg, were you able to, A, hear that and/or follow along on the PowerPoint?
Yeah, no problem. This is, I appreciate the work that went into the presentation, I think it's concise and it does give us a good overview.
Great. Any questions or comments you'd like to ask, sir?
Not at this time.
Okay, dope. Anyone from the dais? Alderman Bruno?
Just wanted to second Alderman Kilburg's, I think the presentation was well put together, very informative, I think it was very useful for the viewing public, thank you, you and
Anyone else from the dais? General policy questions regarding what was presented this evening? Alderman McGowan?
Thank you, Mayor. I have more of a specific question, and by the way, that was just a wonderful presentation, so thank you as well for that overview. And this is regarding the projected increase in revenue should the sales tax referendum increase pass. Why was there a difference of, I think it was like $332,000 projected between, as an increase between fiscal years 19 and 20?
So fiscal year 19 would be a partial year, you would only be collecting sales tax from July through April.
Okay.
In fiscal year 20, it would be from May through April.
Okay, I guess I was trying to figure that out quickly in my head when you mentioned that, I didn't really understand what that meant, but that makes sense now, thank you.
Because if the referendum passes, the sales tax collection doesn't begin until July 1st.
Oh, correct, okay, I get it now. Thank you for clarifying that.
Anyone in the audience? Any department heads wish to elucidate or add to? No actions necessary, ladies and gentlemen, so we'll continue on with the agenda, thank you. City Administrator Dawkins. Item four, amendments to the agenda, are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda, all items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine and can be enacted with one motion by this council, is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Bruno, seconded by Marx to approve the consent agenda. Any questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Don Cummings.
Aye.
Becky Ruby.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Kilburg, aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Jean McGowan.
Aye.
Jim Reddick.
Aye.
Robert Swanson.
Aye.
Item five passes with nine affirmative votes, no nay votes, and one absent. We skip down to item 9A, this was referenced in the city administrator's presentation, we are recommending setting the fiscal year 2018, 2019 budget public hearing for Monday, April 2nd, 2018. Is there a motion to so-do?
So moved.
So. Alderman Marx.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Bruno. Any questions or comments regarding the public hearing itself, structure, process? Alderman Kilburg?
No problem.
Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Don Cummings.
Aye.
Becky Ruby.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Kilburg, aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Jean McGowan.
Aye.
Jim Reddick.
Aye.
Robert Swanson.
Aye.
The motion passes with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. We skip down to item 10, municipal bills for payment, we kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills as recommended by the city administrator in their aggregate for our consideration.
Total bills, $697,155.52. Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills, has read the individual items that add up to that amount, can be found in tonight's packet on the city website.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented and available to us and on the website, is there a second? Alderman Ruby, questions or comments regarding the bills? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Don Cummings.
Aye.
Becky Ruby.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Kilburg, aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Jean McGowan.
Aye.
Jim Reddick.
Aye.
Robert Swanson.
Aye.
Item 10 passes with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. We skip down to item 13, ladies and gentlemen, new business, any new business from anyone joining us this evening? From the dais? From Michigan?
Nothing to add.
Nothing to add. A motion to adjourn would be in order, ladies and gentlemen.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Marx, seconded by Alderman Ruby, all in favor of adjourning this meeting?
Aye.
On this august day? Oh, I was gonna continue on, aye, that's adjourned. Thank you, Alderman Kilburg.
Yeah, thank you.